Seeing the President, who am I now call Union 26?
Alright, so our first item is to consider moving into executive session for the superintendent contract negotiations with Dr. E. C. Omara Herman. So I move Regional School Committee enter to executive session pursuant to GLC 30A Section 21A 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent's contract, Dr. E. C. Omara Herman with the intent of returning to open session.
Second.
I think Jennifer?
Yes.
Alright, we'll call vote for executive session, Dan?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Erv?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass?
Yes.
I move to, I move that Union 26 entering to executive session pursuant to GLC 30A Section 21A 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent's contract, contact Dr. E. Zmar-
C. Omara.
Zmar, Zmar Herman with the intent to return to open session.
Second.
Second, moving second, all of us in favor, I will go roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Erv? Aye. Bridgette?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah Bass?
Aye.
Thank you, we're now going.
Alright, Michelle returns.
Bridge was difficult or something. Yeah, I haven't been that late in a while.
Yep.
I think it's just too many people down there. Too many people go through here. I can't remember the last time I drove into New York. Can you maybe take the train?
Yep.
Now have they, I think they've adopted or going to adopt like a charging charge? Basically, toll fee for people entering the city, I think. It's already expensive.
Yep.
Some of those bridges are 25 hours to cross. It might be live, so let me talk about what it might say. No, I realize that. It sounds like it'd be easier for us to leave.
Yeah.
Anyway, alright. I don't know if Dave's gonna join us, I sent him a note. Yeah. Yeah, I think he was just like recording at 9:40, he's heading to the sheets until like 3:30. I was like, oh, God, it's coming, oh, good, you're going. Yeah, so I asked the question this. You're supposed to be there, right? Like, yeah, I think so. Yeah, it could be, it could be either way. Well, you know, there's gonna be questions. And if I'm not here, I can't, I can't answer them. So I'll quickly go through the update and where we're at now two weeks later and then you see what kind of questions they have.
Yeah, I'll do a little intro, because I wrote a little motion language for them. I'll just go with the demo, because that's actually after the interview. But I'll go through, you know, I had to make with the town staff and give them their process. We bought and invested in a formal set of motions from the community, both directly to me but also the rest of the town. So we got, you know, motion language to add a factor. It's basically, yes, one B, there's more like, one B, there's more like 3C.
Yeah. And the fact that 3C committed 4 to change is, it came down. I don't know, probably something.
You didn't see the first draft, because the first draft was actually even lower.
Yeah, we, there were a couple things that we had.
There was like a high $3 million number or something. They don't go back up, which.
And to me, gut check, it feels right where it's at.
Yep, yeah.
And I know the one B is a little bit over, but.
Margaret.
Aye.
And Sarah Bass.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi, Margaret. Thank you, Margaret. Okay. So I would actually like to ask the committee if we can do a wee bit of rearrangement and let our SLR friends go next since they don't need to be here till tomorrow with us. So if that's all right, then I'd like them to go.
Appreciate it.
You're up.
So if you don't mind, I'll introduce it a little bit. So I wrote a memo to you all that you didn't get until, I think, four o'clock or maybe four fifteen today. Sorry for that. And the intention of the memo was to be a little more formal in action steps by the by the committee. And you guys can take these. I suggest three motions you guys can do with it as you as you see fit. But but the idea being that after conversations with some town staff and talking through the procedures for the Town of Amherst, it might be best to be very, or not merry, but more, you know, formal with with, you know, the action steps that you'd like me to take in directing our friends at SLR and then also to be very clear in the requests of the of the Town of Amherst. And so one of the motions here is just a preference of 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 option 1B and then if restrictions are taken off to do 1D. And then, of course, the second part is to to actually request the town take the restrictions. It helps if I use the right mouse. So the second motion is to is to ask the town to take the restrictions off, the other 1.7, eight hundred thousand in in Community Preservation Act and and nine hundred thousand in free cash to to be able to sort of afford the 1D option. And then upon further review and and some conversations, not formal ones but informal ones, you know, the the idea of of the master plan kind of came back up and and since the Town of Amherst is going to have to 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 sort of take up some things related to this again, I think the opportunity to sort of ask, hey, there's a there's an option for north-south orientation, there's an additional chunk of funding that if you funded it, we'd be open to that as an option to explore as well. So I think, you know, the I think that request to the Town of Amherst is 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 maybe aspirational in some ways, but certainly, you know, you know, I don't know. I don't know where the I don't know where the, you know, where the town council sits as far as their their motivation to to consider a north-south option. It does play more specifically into the the master plan that was was devised a few years ago that we partnered with the Town of Amherst on. And so if they say no, they say no, and we move on with with the other options, depending on how they they take action relative to those other funding that are already in place. But I think it, you know, can't hurt to sort of pose the question, see what they think. And so with that, you know, there's sort of really three options here that we're going to talk about tonight, and there's some refined numbers from from our designers here at SLR. And so I think I'll switch to the slide deck, just let me know when you want to go through the from one slide to the next.
Thank you. Thank you all again. You only get me tonight, Mark, isn't I here, as you can see? Go ahead. So we revised that slide. So where we left off since last meeting, based on the feedback that we received, we narrowed down the options from the eleven we discussed last time. We're now down to three. We have eliminated synthetic turf from the discussion because it really just didn't fit any of the budgets. And we utilized our field investigation data rather than aerial mapping and basically rebuilt our concepts in CAD to get better numbers, to refine quantities. And then we also recently got some fresh bids in on similar projects, used those numbers, again, updated the spreadsheet, and things worked out pretty well. I won't go through the summary again. The only thing extra, we did the field work of the geotechnical investigation. It pretty much proved what we thought or showed what we thought in that the the track is in pretty bad shape and needs of more than just a mill it off and repave it. The asphalt's really brittle and just would not be able to support another track for twenty years. Can move on. So now we have an option 1B, an option 1D, and a 3C. So 1B is the current orientation. We rebuild the track to a now from a six-lane to an eight-lane track. I, you know, rejuvenation is what we were calling it last time. Let's just say we're going to renovate the existing field. We're not going to rebuild it. And we were working towards a 1.7 million dollar budget. Option 1D, again, the track would be reconstructed in its current orientation. We would do a new add two lanes, make it eight lane. This would be a fully reconstructed grass field. We would pull out all the topsoil, stockpile it, amend it, rebuild the underdrain system under the field. We would also retrofit the lighting out there for LED. And with this option, we were working towards a 3.4 million dollar budget. And then we heard a lot of comments since the last meeting, and, you know, as Doug said, let's not throw out the north-south possibility. So that would be a new north-south orientation. The shape of the track would be tweaked a little bit to get that Olympic-sized track, shaped track. It would be a brand-new lighting system, brand-new field, brand-new underdrainage, everything. And we actually ran an opinion of probable construction costs, and right now we're at four point, four million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we'll go just look at these options quickly. So again, 1B, key elements are this will now be an eight-lane track. We're not taking out any of the ADA accessible improvements. We renovate that grass field, so that would be we till off the the grass, we regrade the field, laser grade it, and we put down new sod. So not quite a fully engineered field, but get rid of the depressions, the dips, the bumps, and it'd help with the permeability of the field. So we did a detailed cost estimate, OPCC, opinion of probable construction costs, and we're actually one hundred, one million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, which is currently over the allocated 1.7. However, we've had discussions. We have a drop-off that we're proposing for Mattoon Street. That's actually town property, not school property. That could come from a different source of money. We're also, as I mentioned before, we're using real mapping before now, before we're using aerial. We've reduced the contingency from twenty percent that we presented last time down to fifteen. By the time we're at final design, we'll have the contingency down to five percent. So with just a couple minor tweaks, the contingency alone would bring it below 1.7. So, you know, we can look at scaling back some of the extent of the walks, some of the proposed new fencing. We have some parking lot improvements, so we're confident that 1B can be done for 1.7. And then I won't go through it now, but you would ask last time for our detailed estimate, so you'll have that to review. I didn't update the key element on this one, I apologize. But this is an eight-lane track under 1D, new perimeter fencing around the track, not just along Mattoon Street, Mattoon Street, retrofit for an LED lighting. So we had utilized some of the poles. We have to relocate two poles, no matter what, on the north side of the track. But under this scenario, the lighting would go from high-intensity discharge, metal halide lights to LED. This still has all the ADA walks, and as I mentioned before, the fully reconstructed grass athletic field. And this puts us under that, currently under that 3.4 million dollar budget. And then 3C, which again, I missed it on the slide, but new north-south orientation, slightly different configuration for the track, allows a little bit wider soccer field within the track, brand-new LED lighting system, a new shot put area, new throwing. We did include a bleacher pad in this one on the west side, and that was more so, we didn't really have a budget we're working towards, but also that would be harder to construct at a later date, given the site, than one on the east side. So the number does include a fairly substantial bleacher pad, and then all the natural grass improvements, new irrigation, free draining stone underneath the topsoil sod, you know, fully re-engineered field. And then we did update the project schedule for our for two reasons. I realized last time we kind of put a lot of pressure on you, saying we need a decision to move this forward. We, when we started this project, we were thinking about projects in the previous two, three years where if we weren't out to bid late fall, early winter, we were going to have a tough time getting contractors to bid it. This year, we've seen it on numerous projects. There are lots of contractors out there looking for work. Can't guarantee it again next year, but I think it was a sign of the pandemic, you know, work workers not being available, materials, there was a backlog, and I think we've worked through that. I was at a couple pre-bids today for similar projects, and we have a track and field project out to bid that awards or that opens next week, and we had fifteen bidders show up to a pre-bid. So we're we're confident that we can give everyone a little bit more time to figure out budgets, figure out what design they want us to move forward with us with, and that we could bid this early 2025. You know, I don't I don't want to keep pushing it just for the sake of pushing it, but I'm confident that we can get this project done the summer of 2025 still and get through the design and the permitting. And while we, I think right now, there's a little, there's going to be a little lull if they figure out the budgets. We can, there's commonalities to all three designs that we can work on in advance, so when we actually have a go on whether it's 1B, 1D, 3C, we'll be able to turn around preliminary design and get the most important part, the permitting, going. And I don't think, you know, we we did eliminate synthetic turf. I think that would have been a hurdle in the permitting that could have slowed things down. With the northwest orient, north-south orientation, we have a little more work in the wetland-upland review, but I don't think it's that significant that anyone would see an issue. We're taking an area that's athletic facilities and turning it to athletic facilities, so it's just construction, earth moving, and sediment and erosion control. So we have a lot of meetings to go through permitting and the different groups that we have to talk to, but I'm still confident that we can get this done.
So just one other thing I'll share with with the committee. So in talking with the town manager a little bit and the assistant town manager, we were talking through the town council's process and timelines and that sort of thing. So they have certain formal processes that they have to go through, and and it really would require some hearing notice, that sort of thing. That's part of why we kind of pressed Kevin and his team to to maybe give us a little more time and give the town a little more time to go through their process. So they have, you know, they're of course doing their budget, trying to finish that up, but they have two meetings in June and only one meeting currently scheduled in July around the fifteenth. That would be a little bit late, I think, for it would really, really kind of push the envelope. So what I'm hopeful is that between now and and really their their last meeting in June, that that would give the the town council June, that, that would give the, the town council and of course the CPA, you know, sufficient opportunity to kind of meet, have their process, and, and sort of take up the requests that I, I put in the memo, and give you guys an answer, and therefore give, you know, some direction for the project relative to the funding that's available, and, and allow us to meet, you know, sort of deadlines and, and, and get the project, you know, sort of built next summer.
Great, thank you. Tomlin?
So thank you for adjusting those options. I think you heard what we said last time, so it's great to see that. I'm also excited about option 3C, which is basically the premium platinum version of what we had discussed, so that's great. And not to get ahead of ourselves, but I think the motions that Doug has put out align with what we had discussed. I think the only new thing is that option 3C that we should discuss. Out of curiosity, just one question on option three, there's no west-side straight, I don't know what to call that.
Yeah, there, we.
Why, why is that necessary for 1B and D and not here?
It's, only it was included in 1B and D because we were using the existing footprint. If we're designing a brand-new track, we typically only include one sprint section. It, it wouldn't be a huge add to include it here. And it's usually just used to take some wear and tear away from the primary side. It's, it's not used for competition.
I see, okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Good observation.
Two things. I think I had asked to see the field layouts.
Yeah, so.
So, because, I mean, really, under any of the options, because, I mean, the track's bigger, it's not maybe a whole lot bigger, but still, how does, are we going to lose any playing?
Under the first two, nothing is going to be lost. Under this one, and it's tough to see it's there, there is a soccer field shown where the old track was, running north-south, running the exact same orientation of the field. That would be a full, it's, yeah, sorry, it's very faint on there. That's just to show that that area would be restored under this option to a level lawn, which would be a multipurpose playing field of any size. It's a full-size area for, it'll take, you're going to displace lacrosse now, which is kind of up in the middle of the field, which you will not be able to see on the aerial. The other two areas are just practice areas. So you get another full playing field, so your lacrosse field gets relocated, but this field will now be large enough to be a full-size soccer field, football, lacrosse. And we also talked about how the original Weston-Samson plans showed a softball field. We still think that that could be an option tucked into the corner, and then you have this multipurpose field in the outfield. So you have an overlay field.
Okay.
So you, you still just kind of have these two little awkward north-south practice spaces that don't accommodate any real field size.
Right.
But there's still going to be open grass areas.
Okay. I have, I have some more questions, thank you. Well, sure, another question. It, it's not really, well, it is partly for you. If more money becomes available, then I am not yet convinced that we neither can, I'm not convinced that artificial turf will not, can't be an option. And, and I bring that back, not because I'm stubborn, or I love synthetic turf, but because I don't think any improved grass field can stand the wear and tear that we put on our fields. And I think we have magical thinking about how we're going to maintain the grass so well that we can play on it as much as we do. So I'm not ready to say we've eliminated artificial turf if there is enough money. Obviously, there isn't yet, so. And I'd be interested to hear more about what the permitting issues might be if there are non-PFAS and PFOA options.
Just from experience, the, the discussions happen, the questions are going to be asked, and it's going to lead to more questions, and it can usually add to more meetings.
Right, right.
That, that's it.
But, so can I, can I ask though, is there any way to make a natural grass field? Well, let's say if years from now, we wanted to replace that grass field and make it an artificial turf.
Any one of these, any one of these scenarios could be converted to synthetic turf at a later date.
With any kind of, like, some, it doesn't have to be completely torn out?
You have to pull out the topsoil.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the tops, anything organic would have to come out from underneath, because anything organic's going to degrade over time and cause settlement and things of that. So we've designed plenty of fields with the thought that, hey, maybe five, 10 years from now. So the perimeter is designed to be able to adhere turf to, the underdrains are designed in the same fashion, it's just getting rid of that organic layer of material and replacing it with free-draining stone.
Okay.
And then building the.
So the deep subsurface is the same.
Exactly.
Okay, final question, if I may. This replaced the, the new soccer field, or rebuilt one, that I can't see.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that improved in any way, the drainage or anything there?
This budget doesn't account for any improved drainage. There is underdrainage under the existing field within the track. I don't believe there's anything to the north of it. That could be evaluated for reuse. This, right now, the budget just reflects grading, you know, renovating, not, not reconstructing engineered.
Right, thank you.
Doug, did you have a question?
I don't, excuse me, I don't know what stage of the process it's, we're going to need the details on, but the maintenance schedule and estimated cost for a natural grass and synthetic turf is something that I think the town is going to want us to know before they're going to be willing to.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that, that would be, typically, that's a provided, during, developed and provided during final design and then post-construction, but we've already had discussions about comparable projects where we're doing similar things, where providing operation maintenance plans, and then what that is costing communities. So we've been having some, some discussions about that already.
With the town.
Yes, with the town.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So, hi Kevin. The, the last time we saw the, an estimate for 3C, it was 4.8 million?
Yes.
And now it's 4.23. I'm not complaining, but like, what, what happened?
Yeah, part of it was, you know, some of just the assumptions that were made in the previous round versus what we know now. There, the contingency coming down 5% when we're at a higher number, that's a big chunk. Trying to think with this one, not sure if there's much else. I think, you know, honestly, we, we might have missed those, the pole vault in the shotput area last time, although it's added now, which, again, the cost came down. We, we kind of, two weeks ago, we, we just restarted, we took the numbers away, took the quantities away, updated the prices with more current numbers, you know, all of our options changed for different reasons. I think the contingency, contingency though, had a big piece to do with it, and we had carried an allowance of $150,000 for underground retention, which we're handling a different way with just pipe networks. So again, it's just, that's the thing, as we develop this, and we're, we're still not really at preliminary design, we're still kind of at the conceptual phase, so this will just keep getting refined and hopefully just keep going lower.
Anna?
So, kind of in line with Jennifer, I was looking at the comparison between this estimate and last time's estimate. Last time's estimate, the difference between rebuilding the track where it is and reorienting it to a north-south orientation was very small. The difference was like.
I think it was pointed out to me last time, there, there was something wrong there.
Okay.
And rather than dwell over that, we kind of.
That's fine.
We stripped the numbers, stripped the prices, and reran every, everything, so.
I mean, we were surprised that there was such a little difference.
Yeah, well, I was, I was a little bit too. Under options one, what we hadn't noticed though was those, the, the two light poles to the north weren't going to be able to stay, and then having to move them isn't as easy as saying move them, because their, their poles aren't big enough to meet wind code anymore. So we had to actually add some money to the, the ones, to, well, the ones and the twos back in the first round. Again, I don't want to get back to 11 concepts. We had to add money there, and then, yeah, there was just, there was a few things, a handful of things. We're confident though with what we're presenting tonight.
Well, just back to Doug maybe with the schedule. So if, if the town council doesn't get to make decisions one way or another by the end of June, do we just say, we can't wait any longer?
Yeah, I think what we start running up against is far as, I mean, you know, if, if they take no action relative to the already appropriated money, or, or, or take no action relative to sort of the additional request, then I think our, you know, if we want to be in the construction season of next summer, we're going to have to just decide. So they could, you know, sit on this and not take action whatsoever, or, you know, or reject it, or whatever, but I, you know, we, we hopefully have given them a little more time, so they don't feel quite as, you know, pinched as far as trying to, you know, get this through process that they have to have. So there's some, you know, notifications, requirements, and that sort of thing that they need to do. So they should have a little more opportunity to kind of get those formal steps in place. You know, this, this really gives them, essentially through the month of June, to, to kind of get those answers and, and hopefully help us in that regard. If we get into July, like I said, currently, they've scheduled just one meeting in July, it's the 15th, that's really kind of pushes probably a little too far. So what I'm hopeful is that, you know, in, you know, by their second meeting, which I think's the 24th of June, by that meeting, they can make whatever decisions they're going to make, which will then give, you know, Kevin and his team the opportunity to kind of move actively and quickly at that point.
So we should have a meeting. I have Bridgette and then Erv.
So I think my question, first, I might just clarify, like, process. Are we going to let this fine gentleman in his presentation go, and then talk about the motions, or should we talk about the motions now as well?
Uh, maybe we talk about them now and hang on to Kevin for a few more minutes in case we have.
It's okay, I'm here.
Questions that we need answered.
So then I'll go ahead and make my comment, which is, I spent two hours today at the FinCom meeting where Doug was very patiently grilled by folks who are less understanding of the school budgets than, than all of us have come to be, and who are very skeptical about our financial management practices and whether we're tightening things up enough or coming in line. And I really would honestly feel irresponsible to go forward and ask for, for a $4 million plan when we could just ask for what we've had already, because we're making another big ask, as you know, like, right now, and we have to figure out what we're going to do next year as well. And so I have a lot of hesitation to, to go forward with, with 3C, even though it looks beautiful, I think it'd be fun to play on, I'd get excited to take the walks around it after hours, but the same with the other one, I mean, it's always been a great space when it was up kept, so I think we could get to an eight-lane that would do that.
Erv?
I, I was just going to suggest we go to the motions, and, and, because all my comments will come in a discussion of those motions.
Okay, I have a few more people on my list that have had their hand up, so I'd like to get to them first before we go to motions, if that's all right.
So, so my question's for Doug. So I was surprised to see option 3C in your memo today, because it's outside of what the, what this committee, what the direction that this committee gave coming out of our last meeting. And that's fine, and I'm open to considering it, but can you, can you elaborate a little bit more about, like, where did, where did that, where did the idea come from?
So I think that the, some feedback I got sort of secondhand was that, you know, there's some folks that, that have been involved in, in, you know, the master planning process and looked, and, and, you know, that reorientation of the field was a pretty critical component, and so they felt that if we, if we just replace the track where it is, we don't really get any of the benefits of having done that master planning process, and it, and it will require a rework and a, and a reconsideration of that. You know, some of the thing with the north-south orientation is, there's some efficiency of field space, so there's, there's opportunity to kind of get a little more playing space that's, that's more highly usable. So, you know, with that, that kind of comment, it's like, well, we can put it in front of, you know, the council, I don't think it hurts to do that. I think, I think the ask is, is one that, that is clearly understanding the context of where the town sits and what they think about this, and how that, this sits, it's really a capital project, so how does this capital project sit amongst their, their full thing? I, I, I think you can do it in a way that doesn't seem disingenuous, that's my opinion. But I also think it's like, well, you know, we did have a lot of conversation about this kind of reorientation, some people want to sort of see what that looks like as an option to consider. The council may, you know, take two seconds to go, absolutely not, this isn't going to happen, that's okay. I mean, I think that, to, to, since they're going to go through process of, of having to, or at least consider, you know, we're asking them to consider process around some, some already appropriated funds, you know, to, to take this up is, is something they can have as part of that debate, because I think there were folks that were expressing a frustration that, you know, an east-west orientation, regardless of how well you do the field, is really much less than what people were wanting to have this project be. So it's just an option to, to have them consider, you know, whether they want to invest that way or not, is it, is it of enough value for them that they want to kick in another, basically, $750,000?
So I'm going to, I'd like to follow up, and I'm going to push back a little bit on the fact that, on you saying it can't hurt to ask. I don't know that we can assume that it can't hurt to ask. Maybe it couldn't hurt, we'd ask and they say no, and, and that's fine, but I don't think we can assume that within the context of what Bridgette, going back to what Bridgette was saying, and within the context of what we've asked this town council to do in the month of June, in the same set of meetings that you've mentioned, we're also asking them to give additional funding to the operating budget, and we don't know what they're going to do, and they, they might, they, I, I mean, I don't know, hypothetically, they could decide to meet our 6% with free cash or one time or whatever, so, which, which would sort of be in competition with this. So, and I don't think that they can, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I feel like as individual town councillors, I don't think you can look at the requests and, I don't think you can bucketize, I can't hate that word, I don't think you can separate the, the requests, that's what I'm looking for, anyway. So I think it, I think it hypothetically might hurt if we asked, and so I, I, that, that's what I'm thinking right now.
Miguel?
Yeah. I just had a quick question about the, what's it, the concrete pads, the bleacher concrete pads. I just noticed that there are different sizes between the one and three options, I just wanted to confirm if that's due to budget or like any restrictions and.
Yeah, that's, they're primarily based on the original concepts that were prepared in the master plan. We originally, last time around, we only included the small one for the, the one options. The other ones were just placeholders for future consideration. When we were working towards the 3C, we basically just said, you know, let's, let's cost out what that larger one would cost. So this small one here, that's under 1A, 1B, and 1D, is, is just there for, you know, a small, say portable, they're not that portable, but a small set that would just give it a formalized place where it's on level ground. So that is included in the cost for all options.
Okay, and that's like adjustable, like, down the line, it's not something that's.
Yeah, there, there, there's nothing holding it there.
Tomlin?
So I, I understand what Bridgette and Jennifer have pointed out in terms of the concern about asking, but I think there's also the flip side to that, which is, if we don't ask, we may be in a situation where people say, oh, we had this money easily available, and we would have loved to see the north-south, and, you know, why didn't you consider it? So I think the, the important thing is, we have a feasible option for the money that we have in hand that we can pursue, which is 1B. We can ask specific questions about the, the other two sources of funding to make changes, so that we can do 1D. And we can say, well, if the town wants to have something nicer for the public to use, you know, because they love to walk north-south instead of east-west, then there's an option 3C, and I, I don't think it conflicts with us being responsible stewards, and I do hope that people on those committees can understand the difference between capital investment and a question for operational, operating funds. So I'm actually quite pleased with that arrangement of the three motions, because it guarantees that we get to a solution while considering a reasonable set of other options. because it guarantees that we get to a solution while considering a reasonable set of other options.
Mr. Zomeck, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I think this is a great discussion. I wanted to add, if I could, a little to what Dr. Slaughter said, which is, um, in responding to the question about whether one D makes sense to put for, or excuse me, uh, three C makes sense to put forth. In order for us as a community, if you will, to go back to both the CPA committee and the town council to consider one D, the pivotal question they're gonna ask, because we're asking to remove the, uh, there were restrictions on, on that extra one point seven. The key question will be, well, what are we getting, you know, that restriction was north-south orientation. So we needed to answer the question, how much more will it cost to, to move it north-south? So that's the importance of the last option, three C, is we had to be prepared to answer that question because we, if, if we go with the, with the second option, uh, we have to answer that question. We have to go back through CPA to the town council on both the eight hundred and the nine hundred thousand, uh, some coming from CPA and some coming from free cash. So I think if, if done, you know, with kind of open-ended respectfully, and that's our motivation for doing it, that's why, you know, it was important to answer that question. And I think having a little more time for the council to review that would help. And I'm hopeful they can take that up in June, but we'll have to work with the president of the, of the council, Lynn Griesmer, to, to figure that, that, that timeframe out. But I think that's really important to, to consider is that's why we needed that third option.
Thank you. And?
Yeah, so I think a little bit with, um, Jennifer and Bridgette. I think it's great that we have that option to present to the council, and I think it's, and FinCom, but I think, um, you know, and I do understand the difference between capital projects and operating budgets. But given where we are right now, I would rather spend that money on restoring a few more teacher positions than I would on ori- reorienting the track and field, even though I do agree that a reoriented track and field would actually be a better, in many different ways, track and field than a, an existing rebuild. But, you know, if, you know, if I had my choice, I would pick restoring teachers over the track. But that's just a personal opinion.
William?
I was just gonna agree with Tillman, and I think that presenting all three offers, or all three options, isn't like saying, oh, we need this much more money. It's really, here are the three options, which one can we go with? Um, so I, I don't think it's offensive to be asking for the six percent in the budget to restore some of the teachers' jobs and be presenting these three options. Because I don't think it's a request from us saying, we want this four point three million dollar field, this is just one option.
Uh, Deb?
Yeah, just, um, when I spoke with one of the town councillors about after the last meeting, I was encouraged to, um, ask for more, for the reorientation. So I, I don't think that that's necessarily going to be seen as grabby, to use the parlance of, of my family. And then, um, the, the second point is related. I'd, I have been forming some new contacts with people doing local advocacy, and I was encouraged to reach out to po- see if there's some federal funding available for some infrastructure. So I would like to keep all options open, um, just to see if I could go hat in hand to some other people and say, hey, you got any money left over at the end of the fiscal year to throw something our way, which does happen. So, thank you.
Erv?
What are the restrictions that, that we're gonna be asked to be lifted? Specifically, what are those restrictions? That's the first question, then I'll come to the second question.
So in the, in the case of the, um, CPA funding, I believe it was for, uh, what was formerly called an option two, which was a north-south orientation. And I believe it also included the, the artificial surface for the field interior to that north-south orientation. Um, I think for the free cash, uh, it was a north-south orientation, but I don't think the field surface was as, was restricted. So in, in one circumstance, it's, uh, it's the explicit north-south orientation, uh, constraint. And then for the other one, it's both the direction and the field surface are the, are the primary constraints.
So for the CPA funds, uh, does, does the town council have to get in on that? Or is that something just for the CPA to do in terms of removing the restriction?
I believe it'll require both to do it. I think the CPA will have to take a position that they then recommend to the council because the council technically appropriates the money and, and, and therefore concurs with or, or changes the restrictions.
Right. Uh, and that only comment on that is that the, the amount of public participation that took place in relationship to artificial turf was astun- astounding. Uh, and to reopen that now again, that's a wound. I, I just don't think that's wise for us to just reopen that. I mean, I, you know, again, I don't think it's wise. Uh, the second thing is in terms of the, uh, town's budget process, uh, and we're, uh, wanting to ask for some additional funds to be appropriated. Uh, now, it's my understanding that the town manager has already put his budget forward. We all, we all know that it cannot be increased. No, uh, it cannot be increased. It can be decreased, but it cannot be increased. If what I'm saying is correct, where is this seven hundred and fifty-six thousand coming from in terms of appropriation?
So for, for this, because the capital project could be, it would be a separate appropriation altogether, um, from the, from the budget process?
So the, so the, yeah, I was thinking that was probably gonna be it, but the, having the capital be separate, what we're asking for is a separate capital appropriation of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Then we should make that clear in our motion. Because seven, right now, it seems as if we're making, uh, a request for an appropriation from the general fund. It doesn't say that it's coming from capital. Because when I read it, I thought, wow, it's a great ask for that money, but the town manager can't increase the, uh, the, the council can't increase the budget. So we need, need, need to be, we need to make clear that we're asking for an additional capital appropriation of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That I can go with. I mean, I can go with that. Uh, if it were just for general appropriation, no way would I stand up and say I would want that.
Um, so I'm gonna jump in real quick. So first, I also work in construction, so I have seen the same thing with the timeline of, you know, things are still being bid, you know, early, early in the year. So that does not bother me or worry me in the teeny-tiniest slightest bit, because that's how this year was. Um, and then a couple other things I wanted to mention. So, um, I, I think we ask for three C. I mean, if we don't ask, it's definitely a no. So I think we should ask. I also think we can do it in a, you know, respectful way that says, you know, this was part of the larger plan, um, you know, that, that the town and the region worked together to design. Let's keep trying to make moves towards that. Um, and then, you know, there's, the operational budget and the capital budget are, they're different. You know, we tried to make it a little bit easier to fund our operational budget by foregoing some capital projects when we did our budget motion. But for the most part, they're separate buckets of money. Um, so I think, I think we should ask for, ask for three C. Uh, Bridgette?
Yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate what everyone's saying and, um, and I could see the advantages to that. I did just want to point out, because y'all have been sending me to a lot of budget meetings, that, um, that when the town manager put his five-year capital progress, projections, they look grim. Everybody was talking about how tight everything was going forward in that. And then when Doug puts our capital projections forward, those are also tight. And then obviously how much you spend in capital, you're, that's money you don't have, like you're borrowing or you're paying on the borrowing or whatever. So I think it all ties together. I just really am just thinking about our reputation because people have been very cranky about, about the, the ask and phrasing it in ways that are like, hey, we're not managing our house well enough. And so to just come forward like, oh, give us that one point seven, oh, plus another three quarters of a million. Okay, please, please, when we've, when we're also like looking at very serious operating budget stuff. I'm just saying, if we did put it forward, I'd want to see us do it in a way that was like, this is what we can afford and we're fine with that. This is, would be our, you know, a great senken, and this would be our, you know, our champagne budget. If you're up for it, let's cheer, you know?
Jennifer?
Okay, so I admit, I don't know all the details about all the different funds and sources of funds from the town. But I, I'm here, in, in this conversation, I'm hearing capital budget, operating budget, and I've heard free cash, like the nine hundred thousand that the town council approved was coming from free cash. So it's clear that this extra seven hundred and fifty thousand is not gonna come from the operating budget. Would it come from the capital budget or would it come from free cash? I'm thinking the town council would determine that or decide that. And I, and maybe this is a question for Bridgette. In the discussions you've been listening to, um, is there any talk of meeting the school committee's six percent request with a, something from free cash or some, from something other than operating budget? And is it, is there a scenario in which these two asks, the extra seven hundred and fifty thousand and get us a six percent, might come from the same source?
Yeah, I think, um, that several councillors have asked and said, and they're still on this, even though Doug's projections are really clear how horrible of an outcome that would be for us. Amherst is still very much talking about just giving us a one-time gift. And then several councillors have said maybe that could come from free cash. So it could be competitive, yeah. I mean, as far, each councillor is not a full movement of the council. But yeah, and I know that, um, you know, it could, I, I just have anxiety. You put me in the meetings, now I'm nervous.
So just a, a couple pieces of how Amherst tends to, to, to use their budget. So, um, uh, year over year, they try to dedicate, um, for capital spending, ten percent of their levy, so a, a chunk of their available taxable, uh, capacity, uh, for the purpose of capital planning. So they try to regularly invest through, um, recurring funds in capital projects. Um, and so they try to be very planful about that through the JCPC process. And so they have a chunk of the budget that's not gonna get spent on other operating things in order to invest in capital. So they've, they've had a target of about ten percent. They've been holding pretty steadily to that. Um, you know, the operating budgets are, are then, uh, um, largely property tax. Of, of course, uh, you know, state aid is also a piece of that, other forms of, you know, uh, funding from the state like chapter seventy and chapter ninety, and those are all in the mix as far as revenue sources for the town. Those all sort of create a, a total pot of, you know, recurring revenue that gets leveraged to build the budget one year to the next. And, and they take, uh, a piece of that for capital and the rest of it for, for operating. And then, you know, when they finish the year and, and have any residual, so that they underspend their budget, there's some left that, that goes into, into free cash. And so free cash is basically a savings account. We've, in the town of Amherst, built that number up to quite a large amount in anticipation of very large capital projects coming on. So they've been very intentional in sort of building their balance, uh, for the purpose of capital investment in some really expensive projects like our elementary school in Amherst. Um, but also they're talking about a fire station and a DPW and the library. And so those are all, uh, part of the thinking about how the, the town might be using its free cash. But, um, you know, an, an ask like this, uh, you know, is, is a bit off-cycle from the standard capital planning. So it would, you know, as a source of funds for, you know, an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand, um, would likely be, you know, a free cash ask, um, so in a reserves ask. Um, and because it's, and, and I think in some ways for a capital item, that's, that's less problematic because it's not a recurring expense. We're not needing seven hundred and fifty thousand every year from here till forever. It's, it's a, it's a purposeful, uh, investment into something that's going to last, you know, a, a fairly long time. Hopefully, you know, twenty years, uh, ten to twenty years, you know, that kind of thing. On the other hand, the operating budget ask, uh, which if it comes from free cash, is a much more difficult thing because that's a, that's an ask that's, that's gonna recur. Because in other words, if we, if we don't reduce the staff and we carry them forward, then we're gonna carry them forward every year and that ask is gonna continue to be there. And that's where it proves a different problem for the town to solve as far as its assessment, uh, is when it becomes a recurring cost, uh, in our operating budget, that's more difficult because it's an ask for X dollars over and over and over. Whereas this is more of a one, uh, not one time only, but one time in a very long block of time. So those are, those are sort of the point, counterpoint of, of these different sources and, and, you know, pieces of philosophy about how to spend it and how, and when to spend those sort of reserves. Um, there's a certain piece of your reserves you want to maintain for, you know, catastrophic events that happen or hopefully don't happen, but those do come up. Uh, and so there's a certain level of reserve you keep in case something really horrific happens. It's unplanned and unbudgeted in any way, shape or form. And then you can use reserves to be, um, you know, part of your strategy for longer-term, larger cost projects, which is what the town has done over the last few years with its planning for large capital projects.
Tillman?
Would the chair allow me to make a motion? Or is there more discussion that we should have?
There's Deb, Sarah, Bridgette and Jennifer on the list.
You gotta draw a line under the list at some point.
That is the list.
Okay, I will, can I be moved to the end of the list, please?
Yeah. Deb?
Thank you for attending all those meetings. I've gotten a different read. The, the crankiness I've gotten is timing and building it into the base. So I, I just feel like I, I respect that opinion. Um, I just have a slightly different view of what we're getting pushed back about. Um, that was one point. I have another point, which is just back to the, the point about public feedback about the artificial turf. I would like to make a distinction between the public feedback about PFAS and the public feedback about the turf. And that if we're really going to not reopen issues based on that, I would like there to be a more deliberate attempt to solicit feedback from a greater part of the community. And in particular, I do not feel that we heard a lot from the people who actually use the, the families of the people who actually use the fields. Thank you.
Sarah?
I do think we should, um, pass all three motions. I understand the point about seeming demanding, but motion three, in my view, would not be a demand. But more as Mr. Zomek said, you put, you, Town of Amherst, to put a lot of money and study into, into this plan, here's, here's what it would cost, and we're happy to do it if you want to, um, fund it. Um, that said, I think it's also perfectly reasonable to make it clear that if we, if we feel meeting the six percent is more, that's our top priority for funding, then, then we can say that. But, um, and lastly, it's not, we shouldn't get all balled up in how Amherst will pay for it if they want to. That's for them to figure out. They have lots of ways of, of coming up with the money. That's for their finance committee to decide, um, if, if they want to recommend it, okay? And they regularly make appropriations outside of the budget, either capital budget or operating budget, so it's fine.
Bridgette?
So I think I'd like to sort of pull back a little bit and think about how we make capital requests and what we're requesting capital-wise. Like, we've got these two that have already been set aside, so I feel comfortable going to ask for them. But with the third one, if we were gonna make a capital request for, you know, three quarters of a million dollars, we could buy the trash truck and save a teacher because that's an extra sixty thousand dollars. We're seeing that we're paying to the outsourcer instead of having a town person drive the trash. We could go back and, um, the town manager didn't give the regional schools their solar. We could go back and, um, the town manager didn't give the regional schools their solar. But we've got, like, a, operating budget that we could get costs lessened by adding some solar. So we've got places where capital bu- capital can buy us some space in the operating budget. And if we don't, if we're making, like, are we gonna use our capital on this capital when we still need to save some capital for requests that could help our operating budget in the long-term budget planning process?
Jennifer.
Uh, so I just had to a- have to ask, the, are, ha- we're asking only Amherst for this extra seven hundred fifty thousand. Have we considered, is it an option to ask the other towns to kick in from their reserves or their CPAs?
Um, I think the, the difficulty there is the timeline. Because it, it, for them to appropriate would require a town meeting, so they'd have to call a special town meeting. You know, if Amherst doesn't vote the six percent budget, then they'll probably have to call a town meeting. So then there's a new opportunity. Uh, not to be, you know, sort of flippant about this, but, but it is, you know, that, that most likely, you know, not, the, the three smaller towns don't regularly have a fall town meeting. So it's, it, it could be a year from now before the, the funding's available. You can't go into contract without the resources in hand. So it would really, it would ca- if we were gonna do that, um, it would push a project back a full, a full year.
And the CPAs?
Similar for CPAs because they go through the same, same cycle. And they ultimately, even CPA, you know, uh, uh, needs town meeting approval to actually spend the money.
Um, can I ask another question? Um, Sarah, did you say something about we could tell the town council that our priority is the six percent?
If that's, I mean, that was the concern, I thought I heard Bridgette saying, we don't want, we don't want those competing.
Yeah, I have.
So.
I have that concern as well. I just would hate, I would hate for, on any level, for any town counselor or for the, any of the discussion to be like, well, I'll give them for the money for the track, but not the six percent. Like, I, I know you're, you're all telling me that they're coming from different funds and it's up to Amherst to decide how to fund it. But like, I just, it, it makes me really uncomfortable to think about the, these competing with each other, so.
I, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I.
It's not a conversation.
If it passes, I might consider, maybe not at this meeting, but like, some sort of statement, non-binding statement, recommendation or something that we would vote on.
Tillman.
So I, a slight modification to the wording, but I move that the superintendent proceed with SLR option one B, and if restrictions on existing project appropriations are lifted to pursue, pursue option one D, and if additional funds become available, pursue option three C.
Second.
Friendly amendment?
Discussion?
Shouldn't it be or? You can't pursue both. You can't pursue one D and if the additional.
Um, it was, may I respond to that? It was meant to be, and I agree that it may not be grammatically correct. It was meant to be that if any of those conditions become true, that then that the, the higher option be taken. That's why I didn't feel or is appropriate because it's not, it shouldn't be, no offense, Doug, up to the superintendent to choose any three of them, depending on what happens with the town budget.
All right.
If there's a better way of saying that, I'm open to amend, according amendment.
And your amendment was, and three C, if funds become available?
Same, same phrasing as for, yeah. And if additional funds become available to pursue option three C.
Any further discussion?
I'd just say really briefly that I could ease, I was gonna vote for motion one and not motion two. So this one leaves me a little stumped by combining them. Yeah, well, I wasn't gonna vote for option, option three, but that's motion two. So I wasn't gonna vote for motion two.
That's the three C.
Oh, okay. So these ones are, e- okay.
It's the sequence, just in what order we would wanna do things.
I do vote for this one.
I do have a question about the motion. So the memo from the superintendent has motion one and motion two, and on pa- page two, it has an additional motion. If we pass them a- as written, would the m- additional motion supersede the previous motion one?
That's why I included my add.
I know, but to Bridgette's point, I don't wanna vote for three C. What, what if I don't wanna vote for three C? As written, that's, it separates them.
Maybe motion one should be the last one. Like, if we don't get, if we don't get two, if we don't get three, two and three, then we're not doing option, motions two and I call it motion three, even though it doesn't have a number. We don't get motions, if we don't get both two and three, it, approved by Amherst Council, then we have to do motion one. So it's like, motion one is if everything else has failed.
Tillman?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay.
May I make a different motion?
Yes.
I move to request the town of Amherst to remove at the earliest opportunity the project-specific restrictions on the Community Preservation Act appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars and the free cash appropriation of nine hundred thousand dollars related to the Amherst Regional High School Track and Field Renovation Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of motion as presented? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Excellent, unanimous.
May I?
Yeah.
Can, can we, sorry, I will move in a second. Can we say that we request that they consider rather than request the money, or is that not gonna work then? To make it a little bit more polite?
I think it's entirely up to the committee. So if you wanna, if you wanna soften the language, feel free.
I move to request that the town of Amherst consider appropriating seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred sixty dollars at its earliest opportunity in addition to previous appropriations to pursue in the north-south oriented design option titled three C for the Amherst Regional High School Track and Fields Renovation Project, and if funded by the town of Amherst, to direct the superintendent to pursue this option.
Second.
All right, any discussion, or?
I really do not like this. It, it's, no matter how we say it, we're still asking for seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred sixty dollars. We are in a posi- it, it just, it, it just, it, it makes us look bad in my, it looks, it makes us look, uh, as if we keep asking for funding. There's far and above that which is currently available from all sources. We're, we're, we're gonna say, we're, we're asking the town, find the money somewhere to fund this. While we're already asking in the same breath for a six percent. And, and, and to say that those two will not be, uh, seen as, uh, as the same, I think is a fantasy. They will be seen as the same. The counselors will say, why is it that the school committee keeps asking us for additional funding when we've already made our budgets known to the town? Uh, we're now under budget, under, uh, negotiations and, and it turns it to, it turns, it turns it to council coming up, uh, with, uh, a, a final budget to meet the, uh, town manager's targets. And the school committee is coming back, back to us and asking. I, I would be, if I were a council, I'd feel incredibly frustrated with the school committee.
Deb?
When I told one of the town counselors that as of the last meeting, the north-south orientation was dead, I was told specifically, you should ask for more, period.
William?
I was just gonna say that we're not asking just for this. I feel like we're asking for three specific things. We're asking for the, what we already have in hand, the one point seven. We're asking, can you change, uh, the stipulations around these monies? And that would give us the three-point whatever. And the pie in the sky ask is, if they really do wanna change this to north-south orientation as the, you know, the grand scheme of things, this is what the cost would be. And, and I feel like that's not us saying, this is what we have to have. We're laying out that these are the three options. So I, I feel like it's important to have that as an option there, for them to see the numbers, for them to see what it would take. And, and I think it's totally a separate ask. I don't even see it as an ask, I see it as, these are three options. And the ask is, which one are we gonna choose? Which one can we afford?
Anna, did you hear her step?
I think I lost it. I should write it down.
Tillman?
Uh, what, what, really, I said, I think it's really important because this will be used by more than just the school. It will be used by the community, and I think we should put that option on the table. And as we discussed previously, we will present this with all the caveats that, you know, this is a choice and we have a, a different solution that we can afford. We just wanna check with the broader community.
So I was just gonna say, I think that there's a feeling that there are some town counselors who, um, would be interested in seeing that information and would be interested in have some motivation to actually fund it. I think if we can, if we can maybe direct Doug in his discussions with the town counselors to present it as a third option, and if they like that option, it would cost this and then they would need to appropriate the money, as opposed to, we would like you to appropriate this money so that we can do this. Um, it'd be more as a, if you think that this is much better and you wanna fund it, it would cost this and then you need to appropriate the money. I don't know if that's a separate motion or if that's just a, uh, hey, Doug, listen to us and then just let them go off.
So I don't wanna be the person who, who tells you, but we're in a budget crisis. The town knows we're in a budget crisis. We know we're in a budget crisis. And there's a big ask here that we could ask instead for something to help the operating budget, which would mean our recurring costs and the amount of people that we had to cut and people who wouldn't be with our teachers wouldn't be there. And, um, yeah, I know I've been spending a lot of time with it, but it's, it's a real thing that the town in every meeting they're in is saying, you know, we need sustainability for the schools. What if we use this three quarters of a million dollars to have more sustainable operating budgets for the schools? I feel like it's short-sighted to ask for the, the beautiful shiny thing on the hill when we've got, you know, like, you're not gonna put on the addition when you've got cracks in your foundation.
Jennifer?
Um, just so I'm clear, if this motion passes, this gives, i- if this motion passes and all the funding falls into place, that, uh, that we're saying we want option three C. I, I'm asking because there was talk about opening up the artificial turf discussion again, and I just wanted to clarify it, or can someone confirm that this motion ties us to three C only?
Tillman?
Yes, that's the intent, and the attached material, three C explicitly say, says that it's a grass surf, natural grass surface.
Sarah?
And I don't think even with this money, there'd be enough to put an artificial turf field in a north-south track. So.
Any further discussion? Sarah?
Well, I've quite, maybe this is a question for Doug, um, that might lead to a friendly amendment. I don't know. Do we need, does, does the committee need to pass a motion that asks for the money? Can we just direct you to let the town know that it costs this much more?
I think it carries.
I mean, do we have to ask for it?
No, I think it's, it's, I think it's appropriate to ask because I think it's, it's a very clear direction and, and you can demonstrate by your sort of vote, you know, sort of the, the sense of the committee and from sort of one political organization to another, uh, it's, it's directive in that way. So I think it, it carries more weight and it is very, it's a bit more formal. So I think that, that has, uh, a little more heft for them to take action. Um, so I think it, it has some value in that regard.
Any further discussion? All right, so, um, vote on the motion as, right, it adds the word considered, right?
Yeah, consider appropriating instead of appropriating.
Okay. All in favor? Six, all opposed? All abstaining? All right, thank you. The motion passes six, two to one.
So do we need motion one? Do we, do we need motion one?
Yeah.
See what it gets.
I, I think, yeah. I think if we pass a revised version of motion one with one B, one D, three C, in one motion, we make it clear what the preferred order is.
Right, I agree. I think that was, eh, part of the intention of, of that motion was to be explicit, partly for me, but also to indicate, you know, sort of order of preference. You know, obviously, we want the nicest option if the money's available, next nicest option if the money's available. But we'll work with what we've got if that's what we, what we end up with. So I would suggest, yes, it would be helpful to do that.
So I move that the superintendent proceed with SLR option one B, and if restrictions on existing project appropriations are lifted to pursue option one D, and if additional funds become available, pursue option three C.
I second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for staying forever. Okay. Back to the top of our agenda. Uh, so, chairs update. Uh, I have, uh, you know, we have been asking our towns for, to fund our six percent budget. Um, and we told them that we would, you know, start advocating for our own, our own selves. Um, and I just wanted to put out there that I have done a few things. I went to the MASC day on the Hill where we spoke with several, uh, representatives and senators' offices. Um, since then, I've spoken with several other places. I will give you my list of people. Um, because, you know, if we're gonna ask them to do more for us, we need to also do more for ourselves, right? So I have spoken with offices of Representative Patricia Duffy, Senator Joe Comerford, Senator Lewis's office, Ian O'Neill, who is the education analysis for the Senate Ways and Means, um, someone from Mark Paul's office, Paul Mark's office, um, and today even Rep., uh, Dan Carey. So, um, we've started our advocacy and I think we need to continue because while we are at the tail end of this budget year, we already need to be advocating for next budget year. Um, also, I want to let you know that Pelham passed its six percent budget, uh, and the dollars and the assessment. So thank you very much to my friends in Pelham. Um, and I think that is all for my chairs' updates. Who can we, announcements? Tillman?
Uh, so after the town meeting and Leverett, uh, the Leverett School Committee reorganized, I was re-elected to represent Leverett, um, for the Regional School Committee. And, uh, that will be true until they recall me or my term ends in April.
Excellent, thank you. Any more school committee announcements?
So I've been sitting in with Sarah Bass on some of these conversations. I've been working with a couple of advocacy, advocacy groups of people who are organizing in Western Mass to contact legisla- legislators about various things that are really straining our budget. Um, I've been, I would like permission to approach McGovern's office to see if there are remaining federal funds for two, the two infrastructure projects this one. federal funds for two, the two infrastructure projects, this one, the track, probably not, possibly, but also the middle school roof. I mean, that would be great if we could get some money from them. I, and there's one more thing. Oh, the, the Ways and Means budget came out from the Senate and there's some also advocacy parts of it. That budget added more transportation aid. Oh no. That budget added more rural aid than the House budget. So there's an opportunity to say yes and please, as well as, there are some amendments out there that senators have put forward around funding transportation at a higher rate. Those are the biggest ones. And Senator Comerford has committed to pursuing getting chapter 7D formula revisited. So there's stuff going on. Senator, not Representative Dan Carey said that there's, the message has been heard that lots of districts are hurting. Two-thirds of the districts have gotten minimal aid and it's not working. And so I think there's momentum, at least in this part of the state, to, to get stuff moving. So considering that it's an election season coming up, getting senators, representatives aligned with our priorities will help with our budget relief. Thank you.
I just would quickly review the, the budget meeting of Amherst Finance Committee. Today Doug started off the meeting by letting them know they have the right of full veto, that they can veto on the 6% or on the assessment method and, but, or actually that the three, that the three towns voted for the funds, but not the assessment. So they had the veto on the assessment method if they wanted to, and that would put the other parts in question. There was discussion in that meeting that we do just what Sarah Bass and Deb are doing, which is that we look for chapter 70, increases circuit breaker charter formula, and to see if we can increase the number of folks who show up as means tested so that our Student Opportunity Act funds could go up. And a lot of the folks on the budget committee, and so then my guests would be on the town council as well, were unclear where the cuts would come from. So I just like pointed out to them, like, on that 4% document, that all those teacher cuts at the 4% will be the cuts we see from the middle school languages to the high school guidance counselors and AP teachers, et cetera, et cetera. So I, at the 4%, all those positions, you know, go. So, so we had that talk and, and that was that on that, on Friday. Deb and I will meet with the Amherst College President and we'll start some conversations about community partnerships there. Those are my updates.
Thank you. Anymore? Excellent.
Just a couple of really short cultural things. There's a really nice opening to the Cambodian, is in Amherst exhibit at the Amherst History Museum, that's on Strong Street. It's really nicely done. As someone who, not on, on Amity Street, sorry. Next to the library, as somebody who comes from a place of different style libraries in the big city, I was pleasantly pleased and surprised at how comprehensive and really well presented it was and, you know, how it's really just, certainly the kickoff was such a nice community event.
Excellent. Lawrence?
Yes.
Point of order. Three hours.
Anna?
I move to extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Could we prioritize the superintendent evaluation form in that remaining time? Amherst meets next week, so we would like to approve it, but makes more sense for the region to have a first crack at it.
Yeah, we can take two minutes if this motion passes and organize our remaining agenda items.
I just want to say I'm voting in favor because we spent an hour and a half in executive session, which was, which was important and is not, that's, that shouldn't be taking away too much from our, rest of our agenda.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of extending our meeting by 30 minutes? All those opposed? All right. We have 30 minutes. Let's see. So we'd like to, I'm going to move the superintendent evaluation. Are there anything that you need voted on so you can do things? Do we need to vote on that SOA?
That would be the only thing. I think the, the ban interest is really quick, but at the same time, if it's two weeks from now, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
The SOA vote and go to the superintendent, that's fine. Everything else will be.
Okay. So superintendent evaluation form, everybody okay with headed there? Next. All right. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, take it away.
So we, Debbie Westmoreland put together a Survey Monkey document. She just created the form in Survey Monkey because it already exists in Survey Monkey. But then we created a PDF version of it. She basically updated it with the current superintendent goals, but much of the language in the document is very generic and sort of given by DESI or MASC and doesn't really reflect what is in the goals. And so we would like to take a moment to update some of the criteria with criteria that are slightly more.
If you look at the second attachment, the report from.
Yeah. Are slightly more aligned with the actual goals. And there's an attachment to this, yep, there it is. That.
Scroll down, scroll down a little bit.
That redefines some of the unsatisfactory needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. And I will be integrating those into Debbie Westmoreland's version or having, helping Debbie integrate them. So that just a little bit more explicit and specific to the goals that we have already set. And so if, if any of you have problems with my definitions of the way the different ratings are defined, please email me directly and not to the whole committee and I can take those comments into consideration as I revise the form. Can you go back up to the timeline? So the idea is that next meeting on the 28th, we will review the revised form and vote on it, hopefully approve it. This is considered the first reading, so this is the first reading of the, the form. And if you want to read it more closely, I can allow time for that. Then on the 28th, we will also be sending out a survey to collect the data that goes, that basically this form out to everybody for your completion along, and Doug will have submitted his artifacts. And will, so he'll, you will email those out to everybody in one email and the, the documents will have links in the documents that will have hyperlinks to specific other data that is enclosed so that all of the, the artifacts can be viewed. The subcommittee is going to try to review those artifacts as quickly as possible. And Doug, if you have a chance to get those to us before the 28th, that would be awesome. We'll review them as quickly as possible. And if we feel like there's something missing or we don't have quite enough information on any particular data point, we can quickly send those to Doug before our meeting on the 28th or as soon as possible after the survey gets released so that you have the updated information. But we don't anticipate having to do that, but just in case that is an issue, that's what we'll do. And then on, we would like all of your feedback by June 4th so that we can then, the chairs of the Amherst, Pelham and Regional School Committees can then compile a report and then that can be voted on.
Presented.
Presented, presented on the, on June 11th at the, that following meeting.
So this would be, this would be one form for all, would be one survey for Amherst, for the region and for Pelham. But when you start the survey, you would indicate if you were answering it for Amherst, Pelham or the region. So if you were on Amherst and the region, you'd have to answer it twice.
So we're all answering it twice?
Not everyone. Because not everyone's on two.
I only get to answer it once because I'm only on one, the regional committee.
Oh, right. Me too. I have so many questions. I don't, I don't, first of all, to compile, so the timeline, number one, to compile an evaluation report. Why is this an evaluation report?
We have a sample. No. So.
This is what we, or modifying what we call the survey instrument. Yes?
Yes.
And then the chairs, you.
Or you're, who you designate.
And Sarah and.
Margaret.
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 Will get together and create a report based on the survey.
That we all answered.
So you're talking about the summative?
Correct.
So that's at the end? Okay. This was an initial step.
No.
It's number one. Okay. So then number two, the superintendent ensures that all reports are submitted to the committees by May 28th.
Yes.
What reports?
He has to give us all of his evidence and his documents.
You're talking about artifacts.
All the artifacts, correct.
Okay.
So we've never done, just to clarify, I've never done this before. So we've been coordinating a lot with Debbie and Debbie has been amazing trying to figure out exactly what we're doing and it's all new to us.
Right. But did you, did you say at the start that we're not going to approve, I guess we have to vote to approve the survey instrument, assessment instrument? We're not going to do that until May 28th?
Correct. Because we have to have two reads is what we, our interpretation was.
Really? Why? Because it's a, why?
Sorry, we don't have to have two reads, but we can. And also it's not ready yet because Anna is going to customize the survey form based on the superintendent's stated goals.
So that means, I think, that we're going to have to have a joint meeting on the 28th with Amherst. If the Amherst School Committee needs to vote, it won't be ready for us next week.
No.
We meet on the 21st. If we need, if the Amherst School Committee needs to vote to approve it, we're going to have to meet jointly.
And it would be the same for Pelham then.
I think we probably can figure that out.
Well, that's, I mean, I don't see a way around it unless we don't need, unless the elementary committees don't need to approve it.
We need to approve it.
We need to approve it. Okay. So we're going to have a big joint meeting on the 28th.
Okay. So the, the chairs can, can coordinate that.
And then, so Anna and William, maybe this, maybe what you've done addresses the concern, because I hadn't seen this document, but I saw the Survey Monkey thing. That, for example, this, this goal of regarding LGBTQIA issues appeared repeatedly under different, what are they called?
It's, it's under standards.
Under difference, it would appear under different standards.
Correct.
So am I, so does this?
It's very confusing.
But so according to the survey, the Survey Monkey thing, would I be answering it exactly the same way? Like every time I get to this LGBTQIA?
You'd be answering it either.
Or is it from different points of view, like related to curriculum and related to education?
So you, you have to look at what the standard is.
Right.
And then based on that standard, these are the, what we, Doug has four goals and those four goals hit different standards. So the survey or the mechanism of, of evaluating him is evaluating him on if, how he did those, met the standards. And then these, these are the goals that fit in that standard. So when you answer that question on Survey Monkey, there is, it is, here's the standard and it gives a definition of it, and here's all the bullet points from the different goals that met that, that falls underneath that one specific standard and then you have to rate it. So you're rating it based on what the standard says and then how he did, met that standard on all the bullet points.
And is it limited? Is our assessment limited to, like whatever, whatever, what do they call them? Indicator welcomes, encourages every family to become active participants? And then there's this LGBTQIA goal. So I'm only, am I limiting my unsatisfactory needs improvement, blah, 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 to only welcoming every family in terms of this LGBTQIA?
You're doing it for the all, for all the things that are bulleted there, you're going to, it's for all of those in your consideration? And then there's a block for comments and so then that's where you can really dig more into it.
She's still talking about this.
But I mean, like, is the only thing regarding welcoming families that I care about?
No, you can, you can rate the goals independent, I mean, you can, you can rate the standards or provide comment on the standards independent of the goals. But the goals are specifically ones you want to address as you go through the standards and as they're aligned with the standard. But you can, you can provide comment, if, if there was something I did that ran counter to a goal, to, to a standard, either positively or negatively, you can provide additional comment relative to that. That's still useful, helpful and, and appropriate. The key is for those places where goals are aligned with standards to make sure that you're considering that as a piece of, of it because I'm getting evaluated on those goals. But the standards are the state standards for, for the work and so you're, you're allowed to provide comment on those independent of the goals.
And there is, if you go further down, like question 14, 15 and 16, it is actually questions about the goals and not the standards. It's very, it's very confusing.
They're rated slightly differently.
Correct.
It's not, it's not like, you know, you're pulling yourself thinner. There is evidence that has to be.
It will be.
And that, those are the artifacts.
Right.
That Doug will be presenting.
And so we just, when we met tonight, we did not totally agree with the unsatisfactory and how it's defined and that it was very generic. And so Anna has gone through in the second attachment. And if you read, she has redone the language to where your comments of unsatisfactory kind of relate more to what that goal and that standard was instead of it being so generic. So it feels a little bit easier to choose one, if that makes sense.
We do have more work to do.
I have a complaint, comment slash complaint about the Survey Monkey and it's the same complaint I had when I was on the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, which is, if you look at, for example, page two of the PDF, it says related to goal four and then you choose unsatisfactory needs improvement, proficient. You see how proficient is bolded?
Yeah.
Why? Because it's like, it's like the, the survey's telling you, click this bolded one, which I think is ridiculous, is ridiculous. And, and I think almost all of them, proficient is bolded. And I asked at one point, why is that? And I, I didn't, I, the answer was not satisfactory. The answer needs improvement. So I just would ask when you redo this, that you just like, don't bold any of the options.
Yeah. It's leading.
Yeah, it's actually, it's leading you to click proficient.
I think it's, I think only the reason why I thought it was like that was because you don't have to make a comment if you click on proficient.
Oh.
Is what it says. And if you go to the comment section, it tells you, you only have to make a comment if you choose the other ones. If you choose proficient, you don't have to write a comment. So that's why I thought it was in bold. But it is, I mean, that's even weird because I would like write a comment for all of them. So, you know.
You just don't have to write a comment if it's proficient. You have to write a comment if it is anything outside of that.
But I don't think the form, does the form require you to?
It does. The DESI form it does.
Okay. Great. Then, then if you could un-bold, that would be great. And I just want to say, the, you know, the, when I, the, the last time I did this, you know, as we've seen, it's complicated. There's standards and then there's indicators and then there's goals and then there's the artifacts. I literally like had to print out the DESI standards indicators and I literally cut them, I cut the row descriptions and I like placed them all over the floor on top of the different goal. It was, it was very, if you, anyway, it's.
You should have came to me.
You should have came to me.
That's why I didn't.
Yeah, this is one of the things I'm gonna try to make the form a little bit easier to respond to.
Awesome.
So...
Thank you.
It's not quite as confusing and convoluted and, um, then also easier to compile into an actual report.
And, and, and...
I may be setting my sights too high.
Right, you, by the way, you're not, no one's saying anything different than the conversations that happened.
No.
In our, in our meeting.
Yeah, the same, everybody made the same points.
Right forward.
Doug? If I may, just, so I think the, the one way to view this is that, you know, the standards are overarching, the indicators are particular examples for reference purposes, regardless of what a superintendent's goals are, and this is true with our teaching faculty, it's a different, they're slightly different, but they have a similar sort of look and feel and, and so I think the thing to keep in mind is the standards are, uh, the absolute frame that you're using. The goals are specific things within that, that you are hoping to have, have been highlighted by me throughout the year. So you're evaluating the superintendent on the standards first and foremost. The goals are the particular, uh, areas of focus that you wanted the superintendent to pay attention to so they, they matter more, you know, as they apply to those different standards and indicators. So I think that's maybe a way to help simplify it a little bit, it's still super complicated because like, there's a standard and then there's like twelve indicators and it's because they have a very, very broad, you know, spectrum of things they're, they're expecting superintendents to do and for you guys to rate them on and which ones are more important and given you're, are driven by goals, which is why when I wrote the goals, I tried to align them with certain standards where they kind of matched up so you knew kind of, oh, when we want to talk about this one, we need to hit it in these areas on the, on the report.
Doug?
Putting aside the fact that I've been on the committee for less than Doug's full year, I think the artifacts will speak to that. How do we figure out how to assess something when the goals weren't determined until December?
So the, the artifacts show how the goals have been accomplished.
Even though the goals hadn't been established then.
Yep, but there's, he's still been working the whole year.
I know.
So, even, even if the goals themselves weren't totally defined until December, it is, the artifacts go for the whole year that Doug has been working towards them.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Would the Subcommittee re- remind me at least what, what you want feedback about before next, before May twenty-eighth?
You need to fill out the form.
No, no, she wanted feedback, feedback on, if, if, so, we're redoing the Survey Monkey, that attachment that's on board docs, we're kind of redoing the words of that, okay? If you look at the second attachment, um, those below the one, two, three, four, five, further down is the suggested language that Anna is going to input into the Survey Monkey. So if you read through those and you have any questions or concerns about those, contact Anna directly. And then we, the big thing we needed to decide tonight was the timeline, if we're all okay with those dates of Doug getting us information by the twenty-eighth, us rolling out the survey on the twenty-eighth, having the surveys completed by the fourth and then the chairs taking from the fourth until the eleventh to write the summative report or whatever the words are, I may have messed up what they are. And to allow Doug to, um, be able to submit what he feels is appropriate, but not overburden him for the, all the artifacts and that if we feel like we need more artifacts on specific things, then we could come back. So we don't, we don't necessarily want you to have to like spend the next month because we don't have a month.
We got two weeks.
We all recognize that, um, you're just an, you're an interim superintendent and you will ha, still have a job next year and, you know, so if this ends up being a slightly, you know, less onerous process, um, we're okay with that too. And so just, you submit as, especially the stuff that's related, specifically related to the goals that we set. Uh, and then, so artifacts related to those, but are, gen, more general artifacts can be more limited in scope if you desire.
Alright.
And then I guess we'd probably need to make sure the chairs are all on board with doing the final report.
Unless you wanna...
Unless you want to designate someone, so that, we should have that by the twenty-eighth, by our next meeting is for the chairs to decide, yes, they're gonna do that? Or if they're gonna pick someone, just so that we have it, like what we're doing, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we can touch base with, with Margaret.
Yep, that's fine. Alright, are we all set? Okay, we, we, what did you need us to vote on? I'm sorry.
We should do the SOA plan.
Okay, because we have ten, ten minutes. Alright, SOA plan.
So the, it has not changed appreciably from the last time you saw it? So I think that, a couple of things I'll really want to point out here regarding this, this Student Opportunity Act Plan. First of all, uh, we submitted this to the state, uh, because they were requiring us to submit it even it wasn't voted by you guys yet. They've reviewed it, they've located, they recognize that for districts like ours, which are held, you know, sort of held, hold harmless districts, that the, of resources we have to apply to this are very, very, very limited. I think the only, uh, and, and there's a broader process we have through like a district improvement plan where you can really dig in more deeply on this, so we don't want to overthink this or, or spend too, too, too much time on it. There are critical problems that it points out that we need to work on, there's no doubt about that. We, we fully are in agreement with you as a committee on, on that. I think as far as things we might adjust, uh, which will be dependent upon the budget finishing its process, is some of the, you know, sort of numbers associated with resources to apply. But as far as content, direction, um, you know, efforts, uh, those are, those will, will stay the same and, and I think that, you know, it's a, it's a starting point for deeper conversations over these next couple of years and so I think that, um, you know, the state was fine with what we had put together. Um, and I think that, that we will, you know, use it as a, as a reference to, to dig in and, and evolve this, this plan over the next couple of years.
Jennifer?
I move to approve the SOA plan for the Amherst Pelham Regional School District for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Was that you, Tilman? Uh, any further discussion? Bridgette?
I'm sorry, I just think probably like, if we could have this, like we have this one and if we can have the data in context year by year, it will be helpful because some of these engagements have been going on for a long time and yet the numbers, the data is still poor in many areas, so, you know, I think it's to be expected. We, you know, but I'd really love to see progress, like is, are the outcomes meeting what we say? You know, because it's hard in this context to know if it's good to approve this or not.
Any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? So it is approved eight, zero, one.
Point of order.
Yep.
Were we gonna do public comment? We have one member of the public, so I figured I'd ask.
Everybody good with that, public comment?
Just waited so long.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Maria Kupicki, South Amherst. I wanted to make sure that this committee was aware of something that did not happen in the past two weeks. When you guys met two weeks ago, the plan was for su, uh, interim superintendent Doug Slaughter to go to the Chair of the CPA Committee and to go to the Town Council President and get this ball rolling. That didn't happen. I spoke with the CPA, well, I emailed with the CPA Chair who had not heard a thing, I confirmed that again today. I spoke with the Town Council President on Friday morning, she had not heard anything. So if you want this field and this track done, which I do by the end of next year, please stay on top of this, please make sure that these meetings are happening, they have to get it on committee. This is gonna be a complicated process for them to do this, it's not gonna be a simple one meeting in and out. The fact that this packet dropped with information, what, two hours at best before the meeting? Y'all didn't have time to look through this whole thing, that's unacceptable. The other three towns besides Amherst, who are not being asked to give additional money, can and have held meetings off their annual town meeting cycle. They can do that, they can meet, their CPA committees can meet. There's a quarter million dollars in CPA money from those three towns that has not been gone back, you haven't gone back after that. Pelham and Leverett said they'd give it to you if you had a grass option, you should go do that, Schutzeberry was, was withdrawn. As this process continues, I hope that you will carefully look at the plans that are being developed and see what you can do to decrease costs and scope as possible so that you're not asking any of the four towns to spend more money than they have to. You can try, I know that you won't be able to do this in the next month or so, but you can have, maybe use the CPA funds for some alternatives, please think about this because maybe there's one counselor who's really rocking and rolling for this, but there's thirteen counselors and I guarantee you that not, not every one of them's gonna be happy about this, so please do not snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. And Irv, you are absolutely right, you do not want to open back up this can of worms of artificial turf because that is not, that will not be short or painless. So... I was so happy two weeks ago, I thought you guys had, had a plan. Thank you.
Point of order.
Yep.
Let's get out here, it's twenty-six.
The extended time has elapsed.
Okay. Anyone interested in making a motion to extend for thirty minutes? Looks like, Anna?
I would like to extend the meeting by ten minutes in order to hear the superintendent's update. I moved to extend the meeting.
Last time we couldn't do for less than half an hour.
I thought, oh, it has to be in thirty-minute increments. For thirty minutes to hear the superintendent's update. Only.
Is there a second? Alright, so, all those in favor of extending the meeting by thirty minutes? All those opposed? Alright, we are adjourned.
He posted an update and a document, there's a document that has Doug's update.
Oh, good.
It wasn't up there earlier. He just posted it.
Five o'clock, I mean, you should be posting.
Yeah.
Friday.
We should, we should make a rule. We could vote for one.